Welcome to our candidate forum at 91.3 Hope FM. My name is Robyn Robinson and today we're going to be introducing you to the candidates for Putnam County School Board District Four. Bud McInnes is the incumbent and Linda Wagner is running as well. All the school board candidates are no party affiliation, which means everyone gets to vote in the August primary for our school board races and the race will be decided. So don't skip the primaries waiting for November. If you need more information on what's on the ballot or any of your polling information, do visit the Supervisor of Elections office. So rather than have the forum on the radio, we've opted to do a video in partnership with Gospel Vision TV and we encourage you to share these videos and help to make sure that other voters are informed as we get ready to go to the polls in August. The candidates have been furnished with a list of questions ahead of time and this is not a debate, but rather each one will get to answer each question and you'll each have a minute to answer. We'll have a timer go off at the end of 60 seconds and we'll ask that you just wrap up your answers then. And the whole thing shouldn't last more than about 30 minutes. Gospel Vision and Hope FM are both nonprofit ministries and we don't accept any political advertising. We don't endorse any candidates or parties or anything like that, so we feel that we can do an impartial forum just for the sake of the voters here in our community. That being said, let's get started. And Bud McInnes, since you're the incumbent in the position, we're going to let you answer first. The first question being, tell us about yourself and why you want to continue to serve on the Putnam County School Board.
Okay, Robyn. Hi, my name is Bud McInnes and it truly has been an honor to serving the last four years representing District Four. My two sons are Jesse and Evan. Jesse's married to Crystal. I have three loving grandchildren, Cameron, Kason, and Sophia. My siblings continue to live in our county and my brother Greg continues to visit. I've spent nearly all of my life in Putnam County, the last 39 years, as a resident of the interlocking area. Throughout this time, I have followed the concerns and issues affecting our school system as a parent, volunteer, mentor, teacher, and graduation coach. And I want to make a difference in meeting the educational needs of our children.
Thank you so much. Linda, same question.
Hi there. My name is Linda Wagner and I'm a resident of Melrose. I've lived in Putnam County for approximately 28 years. I have two grown sons, one grown stepdaughter, and I live in Melrose with my husband, Tom. I also am an attorney in Melrose. I became an attorney in 2015 and I run a family practice and probate practice there in Melrose. I want to be on the board because I want to see people moving to Putnam County because of our school system, not in spite of it. And there's certainly been a lot of concerns nationwide that have come up recently, but I've seen some of the issues in the last couple of years. I want to do something about that. I've been horrified at some of the curriculum and materials that our schools have been exposing our children to nationwide, but we have to be vigilant in our district and make certain that our children are protected from that as well as protected from any safety issues in general. So that one of my primary goals is protecting our children.
Thank you so much. And we're going to take turns, who answers each question first. So for this one, Linda will ask you to share what experience you have that you feel would help you in your duties in this office.
Well, I've had a variety of work experience from a pretty young age. I've been a cashier at Winn-Dixie. I've worked for the UF Vice President in the President's Office back when President Kreiser was there. But for the last 20 years, I've worked primarily in attorney's offices. I've been an office manager, a bookkeeper. So some of the skills I've developed through those positions, you know, include financial understanding, budgeting, researching skills. I've been, since becoming an attorney, I've become a lot more of an analytical thinker. And with all of it, I think I've just learned a lot about just plain old common sense. And I think that's what, one of the things that's needed in our school systems. We need some common sense, especially in our curriculums. But I've been a mother that, a single mother, that put her son through college. I put myself through college, became an attorney just seven years ago. So I do understand some of the issues with parents and their school systems.
And Bud, same question. What experience do you have that would help you to fulfill the duties of this office?
Well, Robyn, having served on the school board, I have experiences in negotiations, conflict management, lobbying for our schools, advocating for my constituents, and navigating the subtleties of bureaucracy that comes with serving as an elected official. My experiences as a 30-year postal worker, a teacher, a mentor, and graduation coach allow me to provide unique insights to our school board. I will continue to promise that I will be the school board member who remains passionate about our children and our community, and I will work tirelessly to engage our community making education a priority.
Do you feel that you've made improvements to the district by your service so far?
I will share with you that. It's a grand sense of personal accomplishment, knowing that you were part of the strategic plan, serving as a graduation coach. Since elected, I have been certified as a pro-literacy tutor and a take stock in children mentor. I sincerely want to make a difference in my community. It's been put on my heart. Some improvements to mention would be the portrait of a graduate. We have an increasing graduation rate and we do have a functional board. Robyn, I believe a school board member should be physically there to support our children at educational, musical, and athletic events to serve as a reminder to our students that their community supports them.
Thank you. And Ms. Wagner, same question. How do you feel that you would make improvements to the school board by serving on it?
Well, one of the ways is by really focusing on parents' rights. I think parents under our U.S. Constitution have a fundamental right to be involved in the decisions of their children's education. I think by being more transparent, by really getting outreach to the parents to be more involved, we can utilize them as a resource as well. I also want to be very vigilant with the curriculum, as I stated before. There's a lot of concerns with what is included, whether overtly or very subtly, in our children's curriculum. So I think continuing to be vigilant in reviewing what's being put in front of our children. And really just being committed to student success. We have to be focused, right now the third grade reading scores have come out, we're at a 34% passage rate. And that's going to be one of my top priorities, is focusing on ways to improve that for our students.
Thank you. And next question for you to start with, since two of the main responsibilities of the school board are to create policy and budget, what are your ideas on these two areas to ensure the students of Putnam County get the best education experience?
Well, with regard to policy, the primary role of the school board is to create policy that conforms to state law. So I think in some ways, our role in creating policy is limited because we have to make sure that it complies with what state law is. That's very, very critical. But we must be able to make, we have to be capable of making very good decisions. Every decision matters. And as far as policy, we need to really be precise in what our policies are and make certain that they benefit our students. With regard to budgets, I'm very fiscally conservative. I do not want to waste money. And I think our children benefit when we are very specific with where our money is going. Waste has no place. We don't have enough money to waste anything. So we have to really, really review budgetary items so we make sure that every dollar is going toward our children's success.
Thank you. And Mr. McInnes, your thoughts on budget and policies?
I will continue to follow the Florida statutes in order to balance new state laws and guidelines, and that would be the upcoming parental rights that the governor has issued. As a board member, I would continue to seek legal advice from our board attorney for matters beyond my understanding. I support the recommendations of the district staff to improve student achievement. Again, the most important responsibility of the school board is to work with their communities to improve student achievement in their local public schools within budgetary constraints. For example, right now, we are reevaluating and determining the best suited curriculum for our student outcomes and providing for supplemental learning like STEM, the Summer Learning Reading Camp, and the Reading Enrichment Program. To ensure the best education experience for the students, the focus will be on reducing the number of teaching vacancies, address teacher retention, and improve attendance.
Thank you. So for years, the school district has been struggling with providing transportation and having enough bus drivers, and that's just been an ongoing problem. Do you have any suggestions for how to handle that moving forward?
I do, but I don't think they'll be very well received. But actually, this was a concern of mine in 2018 and the pandemic has made it worse. The lack of bus drivers is a nationwide concern. As a result, it's not uncommon to have drivers cover more routes, thus students returning home later. It's not uncommon for administrators to take the steering wheel if needed. My suggestion would be to solicit paraprofessionals who are licensed to cover emergency bus driver vacancies. For smaller school districts, this has worked and it may be feasible having full-time teachers that are also full-time bus drivers, yet I'm not certain how that would work in our district. Our teachers have their share of responsibilities in a Title I district. I'm hopeful that the Florida legislature will waive the one-year hiatus of returning to the workforce and allows bus driver retirees to turn to work sooner. Our bus drivers had a significant raise this last year. The district's Human Services Department plans to continue advertising on the district website and advertising in the community. The recent board approval of Tyler Technologies will allow GPS connectivity to the bus drivers in real time, which is a great safety feature.
Okay, thank you so much. And Ms. Wagner, same question. I know the timer wasn't very loud, so sorry about that.
Oh, that's the timer.
I would say that this is a nationwide problem. We have, I think, not just in school systems, but all over. There's many businesses that have been closed because they cannot find workers. They cannot find anyone that is looking for that particular type of work. I think that is an issue with our bus drivers and it's certainly a concern of parents because not all parents can provide their own transportation to get the children there. I did actually, yesterday, did a search for Putnam County bus driving positions and I was able to find three that are being advertised. I'm quite certain there's more openings than just three. And so one thing I would say is we need to perhaps look at our advertising, maybe have it on multiple mediums, you know, social media or any other types, so that we can really get the word out that there are these openings. Parents are aware there's a shortage, but not everybody is aware of the actual positions being offered.
Okay, thank you. All right, we got the timer volume up. All right, Ms. Wagner, next question. For other school employees besides teachers, like paras and custodians and cafeteria, most salaries are already low and with the surging increases in costs for daily living, what can be done to ensure that they make a living on what they make rather than going elsewhere to earn more?
Well, I would say there's no real magic answer for that. We are limited in ways by our budget. While I think everyone desires to make more, it's sometimes financially just not feasible. But I would say we need to look in other areas, again, being frugal with our budget. We need to look at other areas. Are there other areas that we can cut a little bit to perhaps increase their salaries? That would be great. But either way, we're certainly not the only area that's dealing with this. It's in a larger sense, an economic issue that I think the school board may or may not be able to directly affect in a drastic sense, but we do need to look at our funds, we need to look at our budgets and see what we can do. We need to be able to welcome new individuals into our school system and to do that, we have to have something to offer.
Okay, and Bud, same question.
Robyn, the recent paris-to-prose, paras-to-prose program will provide eligible employees opportunities to advance in their employment and gaining teacher certification while they're on the job. The district has been diligent in providing a health plan directed to saving employee out-of-pocket costs too. Governor DeSantis has passed legislation to increase starting teacher salaries. Thus, the school district will be faced with increasing salaries to the minimum state mandate and accommodating these employees as well. Our district is attempting to align these employee salaries and benefits competitive with comparable school districts.
And Bud McInnes, we'll start with you for the next question. COVID-19 and school shootings in other places have been overwhelming. How will the school district continue to maintain the health and the safety of students and staff and maintain learning at the levels it should be?
The school district does an outstanding job protecting our students. I fully support our administrators and their efforts to protect our students at their respective schools. The district did an exemplary job during a very uncertain time. I'm confident the policies and practices enacted after the COVID-19 school closures will continue to the level that is suitable for a quality learning environment for all of our students. We are truly fortunate having teachers and staff performing a phenomenal job during some extremely challenging and unprecedented times. As I mentioned, schools have responded this year with the Summer Learning Camps in addition to the Reading Enrichment Camps.
Thank you so much. Same question.
Well, with regard to health, maintaining the health of students, I would say I'm certainly not a proponent of masks. I know we've gone through COVID and I do not believe in mask mandates, but I don't believe that some of the efforts to keep people safe has to change the learning or impede the learning at all. So I do think, moving forward, we need whatever we decide, if we were to, for example, come across another COVID-type situation, I don't believe that has to affect the learning. And I think we just need to make the right decision so that it doesn't. As far as safety of our students and staff, I was recently looking into the Guardian program. I think it's a wonderful program. I believe having armed employees at our schools is a fantastic way to let teachers be teachers and let others be there so that we do not have to wait for law enforcement in those situations.
And actually, our next question is right along those same lines. Do you feel that our school campuses are safe and what's your opinion on having school board employees being armed? And do you feel that it's necessary to have continuing training in that area?
I do support having armed individuals at our schools. I believe their training is very intensive, from my understanding, and that they have to continue training, which I think is very important. As long as those requirements are there and we have trained individuals, I think it increases the safety dramatically for our children. And as far as the schools themselves being safe, I know there's been some efforts to make them more hardened, where it's more difficult to get in. There's a multitude of ways they're doing that, but some schools are now having hardened corners in their classrooms where there's no possibility of being shot. We hate to even talk about these possibilities, but we need to continue addressing all of those types of issues to keep our children safe, absolutely.
Thank you. And Bud, same question.
Robyn, throughout my professional career, my priority has always been safety. For a child to succeed at school, they must feel safe within their learning space. With the steep rise in threats to our students in recent years, I will continue to advocate for safety within our schools. I am an advocate for the Guardian program and it's necessary to keep it. Also, I will continue to back our current administration's efforts to ensure children are safe traveling from school and home.
And what are your thoughts on the building of new schools and how it's going to affect property owners' millage rates, considering they want to borrow millions of dollars for this?
You want to give me more than a minute?
Well, maybe just a little.
Okay. Our district needs long-term building improvements to continue to prove a highly effective education. With all due respect to the previous administrations, the revitalization plan would be epic, addressing the many Band-Aid remedies of repurposing school buildings in our district's history. The question to voters will be, are our students worth it? History has a strange way of repeating itself. Our school district has been at this crossroad before, so how valuable is education to Putnam County? The revitalization plan invests in updating and maintaining nine schools. It rightsizes the district to match the projected long-term enrollment, which impacts the revenue for the district that which it receives. It addressed long-term maintenance at nine schools while avoiding extensive and expensive repairs and maintenance in underutilized buildings. The district has been selected for a special facilities funding. The proposed bond amount has yet to be determined. School board members were given examples of both $100 and a $200 million bond over a 20- and 30-year timeframe. The projected increase in property taxes would depend on the bond amount and the money that is approved that's pulled down in consecutive, for the construction of the facilities. I'm sorry, one more minute.
It's okay. Your thoughts on the construction of new schools?
I do believe that there are a multitude of schools in our district that need upgrades. They need to be made safer. They need to have the technology available that these upgrades would provide. Being from Melrose, we dealt with the initial plan was going to remove our school and the parents, we, the whole town fought hard and I was very happy the superintendent and the board decided to leave Melrose Elementary as it was. The concern for some of the parents that have spoken with me is that the plan included combining the schools, shutting down certain schools, and then later, if the tax rates are voted on and approved, then being able to build these schools. One of the prime concerns was, what if that doesn't happen? And then we've moved our children, we've closed these schools, and if that funding did not eventually come through, who gets the new schools then? You know, are they going to be built? So that was one of the concerns for me and would continue to be a concern moving forward.
Thank you. And what are your thoughts on critical race theory? Do you see it having a place in our school curriculum?
Okay, I might need more than a minute on this one. Absolutely not. It does not have a place in our school system, nor does any of the subtle nuances that are slid into some of the materials for our children. Critical race theory is not a course, it is an ideology, and it really pits child against child based on factors that we've worked for 100 years to get rid of. And children do not hate or judge automatically. They are taught these types of things. It has no place in our school system. That's more of a parental purpose and we do not need indoctrination in any way from any political or adult ideology. These are children. So no, I do not believe critical race theory has any place and I would certainly fight hard to keep that out of our children's classrooms.
And Mr. McInnes, same question. What's your stance on critical race theory?
To me personally, the critical race theory appears to be being destructive and it rejects our fundamental ideas on which our constitutional republic is based. I feel fortunate having worked in two diverse employers in my lifetime and I don't, I personally don't see this as having a purposeful place in our schools.
So as Christian Ministries holding this forum, we ask our listeners to submit questions and one of them that always comes up is, how would your faith play a role in your service on the school board?
Okay. My faith and my family are the most important things in my life. I seek to honor God through all of my words and my actions and I acknowledge Him as first in my life and recognize that's the most important relationship I have is with Him. God is my constant. Faith played a huge role in my position. As a board, we pray. We pray for our schools. My favorite Bible verse as of late is Proverbs 3:5-6. Trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lean not unto thine own understanding and always acknowledge Him, and He will direct thy paths. Thank you.
Same question. How might your faith play a role in your service on the school board?
Well, I think a person's faith always guides their decisions and on the school board in particular, we're dealing with children and issues surrounding our children's education. And so I believe, for me, it would guide me in decisions to, for example, protecting their innocence. That's very, very important to me, protecting the innocence, letting them stay children. Also instilling the fundamental values that come with God, country, and family. It needs to be in that order. And the fact that, I drove to work this morning and passed Swan Lake Camp and it about brought me to tears. There was a group of about 50 children, not slumping, not just standing around, but proudly standing with their hand to their heart, saying the Pledge of Allegiance in front of a huge flag. And I thought I was going to have to pull over after seeing that. These are the values we need to instill. Love of God, love of country, love of family. And that's why CRT and theologies like that do not need to be involved in our school systems.
Are there any other areas that you feel should be addressed that we haven't discussed yet? Ms. Wagner?
Not specifically. I just, I think everybody should take note that we've just come through a very, very difficult period for our entire country and it has changed us in many ways. So there's new issues all the time that are needing to be addressed and, you know, I hope to bring a new set of eyes and a new perspective to some of those issues. And working in family law, I deal with parents, I deal with teachers every day and I've been hearing what their concerns are and I just hope to take that information to the school board and be able to represent the constituents in our district at the school board level.
And Mr. McInnes, same question. Anything we haven't covered yet that you think we should?
Well, Robyn, I added, the top three issues ahead I see is school safety and meeting mental health needs of our students. The unfinished learning, which is real and inequitable. Students testing in 2021, we're about 10 points behind in math, nine points behind in reading compared with the matched students in previous years. And just the effects of the mask, as Ms. Wagner brought up. Young children are having a really tough time with their phonics and we don't know what kind of measure that's going to have in advancing our students. And of course, the budgetary constraints with projected lower enrollment. I will protect the interest of all of our teachers and employees.
Thank you. And to wrap up, you have one minute to tell us why people should vote for you. And Bud McInnes, you're the incumbent, so why should people reelect you?
Well, Robyn, I've been intimately familiar with the Putnam County School District over my lifetime. I've had plenty of time and energy, I do have plenty of time and energy to vote to the school board. As a retiree, this position is my primary focus. I take great pride in representing our citizens, staying informed about local, state, and federal education policies, and playing a role in helping direct the future of our district. The postal service and education are very similar in that you have the same goals in mind, attendance, discipline, and productivity. The biggest challenge I have observed is changing adult behavior, especially when it comes to education. If I'm reelected, I will promise to continue working tirelessly, engaging our community, and making education a priority. Together, we can show our children the power of education and build a more vibrant Putnam County. For all these reasons, I'm counting on your support. You can follow me on Facebook at ReElecBud and email me at reelectbudd@districtfour@gmail.com.
Thank you so much. And Linda Wagner, why should people vote for you?
Well, because I'm going to be working to give a voice to parents who have felt unheard over the last couple of years. I'm going to be diligent in keeping inappropriate content out of the hands of our students. I have my own firm in Melrose and I have the flexibility to attend the functions, attend the school board meetings, to be involved and to be involved with our own parents in the district. I want to hear from parents, I want to hear from teachers. I think all of them need a voice in our decision-making. Because I truly care about students is another reason. Their future is our future and I think this, we need to make fiscally sound decisions with our budgets and really work on improving the overall quality that Putnam County provides for their students. And I certainly hope for everyone's support on August 23rd. And if anyone would like to reach me, I can be reached by email at lindaforschoolboard@gmail.com or on Facebook at Linda Wagner for Putnam County School Board. Thank you.
Thank you both so much for taking the time to come here and introduce yourself to the voters and want to remind you that both of these candidates are going to be on the primary ballot and this race will be decided on August 23rd. If you have any questions or you want to see a sample ballot or find out where your polling place is or any other information, please do visit the Supervisor of Elections office website. It's soeputnam-fl.com and you can find all the information you need there as far as dates for early voting. as dates for early voting and polling places and things like that. And I want to encourage you to like and follow Hope FM on our social media pages. As we do more of these candidate forums, we'll be posting it there and sharing them. Want to encourage you to share those as well. And we want to say thank you so much for watching. On behalf of our partner, Gospel Vision TV, I'm Robin Robinson from 91.3 Hope FM, encouraging you to get out and vote. God bless you.